Uh, roll call.
Ron Ranger.
Here.
Andy Schaefer.
Here.
Todd Dang.
Here.
Sean Morgan.
Here.
Tim Weber. Kyle Ren.
Here.
Robbie Eland.
Here.
Okay, Kyle, would you do the invocation for us?
Sure. Again, my father, we're grateful for this day and grateful for the opportunity we have to meet as town council, as community members and help us and guide us in our decision making that we can make the best decisions for the people of Rangel.
Alan, would you lead us in the pledge?
Yes, I will. With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number five minutes of the meeting, discussion and action to approve the town council minutes of April twenty second, twenty twenty five.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Kyle, seconded by Sean. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign.
abstain.
abstain.
Two abstentions. Todd and Robbie.
Thank you.
There are enough of us to carry that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, uh, motion carries. Go to number six. Kelly, we'll let you get up and speak to us.
Well, hello, everyone. Um, I'm back here to provide you guys with a brief update on for animals. You know, I was here last fall. I told you at that time that, um, we were going to be seeking grant funding. Um, but I want to back up just a little bit. I'm Kelly Christian. I've lived here about forty years in the community, so I know all of these gentlemen up here. Um, and I'm part of a nonprofit organization, um, that is actually Rangel, Rescue and Rehome Refuge, which is the four Rs, and you'll find it out on the Secretary of State website, um, doing business as for our animals. So if there's any confusion, I just wanted to clarify that. And then our primary goal is to support the shelter, um, however we can, support, um, you know, the town, um, support the animals and support the employees of the shelter. So getting back to the grant funding, I did apply for a grant through the Colorado Pet Overpopulation Fund, which is CPOF, and it's funded through the Adopt a Pet License Plates. I am happy to say that we were awarded eight thousand dollars. I know, I shot for the moon and, and tried for twenty. They gave us eight. It was our first time applying with them. I was very happy with that and will take it. So that funding is exclusively for spay and neuter, um, medical needs, including vaccinations, microchipping, um, for shelter pets only. So that's for shelter pets. And then what had been decided at one point, um, a few months back, is that the town would invoice us every quarter. And then what we will do is we will just go ahead and reimburse them from the shelter or from, excuse me, from the grant funding that we've received. So I thought that was really great news. Um, it's a step in the right direction. We have to build a lot of relationships with these benefactors and that's, you know, one small step toward that. Um, anyway, so that kind of leads me then into, you know, we had talked about a new shelter and I know that's kind of, you know, kind of a sticking point in some areas because it's a lot of money. What we really want to do is try to help support that financially through grant funds. I did, um, reach out to AAF, which is the, you know, I get a little bit nervous and I forget what all these, these acronyms are. Um, but anyway, it's a Colorado group, um, the Animal Assistance Fund Foundation, excuse me. Um, and what they do is they help support and, and, um, supply grant funding to Colorado shelters. And they work very closely with CPOF. I reached out to them and asked if we were eligible for a capital grant. And at this time, we are not because I've never sought a grant through them. So again, you know, they don't have any trust. We don't have a relationship. Um, these are well over a hundred thousand dollar grants that we're talking about. So what I would like to do in the interim, and it won't open up until September, there is an organizational capacity program grant that I will be seeking. Now, what this covers is a variety of needs. It covers, um, staff and board training. It covers non-capital equipment and repairs, technology needs. Um, it helps like with fundraisers, you know, kind of getting fundraisers going. So this will be a, a real collaborative um endeavor and it's something that I'd like to work closely with the town on and with those at the animal shelter because if we can determine what we might need at this point in time without a new facility or that could, we could procure now and then move to a new facility, that will get us one step closer to that, that capital grant that I'd really like to seek. But unfortunately, it will probably be next year before we would even be eligible for a capital grant. So I'd like for you to think about that, think on it. Um, if you have any ideas or thoughts, please reach out to me and let me know. Um, so in the meantime, as I said, you know, I'll be, I'll be seeking this organizational capacity grant in the fall.
What's the timeline on the grant, like when does it need to be submitted?
For the organizational capacity, it opens in September on September first and it closes on the thirtieth of September. And then they will be awarding, um, you'll, you'll know in December, around the first of December, end of November, if you've been successful. And then funds will go out the end of December. So that is about the same timeline as any capital grant as well. Yeah.
So this would be something you'd part, we'd brainstorm together and come up with a list of things.
Yep.
That we could use there, not necessarily that we'd have to bulldoze later, but that we could take and put in.
Exactly. You know, do you need computers? Do you need software? Do you need training for your staff, which I think is a big one because I do volunteer down there and I'm not saying they're bad by any means. I'm saying it would be great to have staff that could maybe work with some of those really unadoptable animals that linger at our shelter forever and make them a little more appealing to the public. You know, so potentially we could use some of those funds for a lot of different things just to get that relationship built, you know, as long as we're utilizing those funds appropriately for being responsible, then they'll feel like they can trust us. I mean, you know, you know how the grant business works and, and, um, so that's something I'd really like to pursue. We do have a few months before that opens up, so I, I would welcome any feedback you have on that.
Is it, is it a matching grant?
Um, not that I'm seeing and the CPOF funds are not matching, matching either. So this is not a matching grant, although I know that typically they like to see, um, they like to see collaboration um, between, you know, the five oh one C three and the, the municipality. Um, they like to see that kind of thing, a lot of organizational, um, collaboration. But I didn't see anything in there, Kyle, about matching funds. Yeah, so. So as long as we can, you know, just get that, you know, and it's pretty much straight up funds, I think that would really be beneficial for us. Um, also, I wanted to let you know just a few, you know, housekeeping things here. We received a generous donation from Utah Gas Court and that will be used toward adoption fees. So we did reach out to several businesses within the town and ask for donations for, you know, to cover adoption fees. Um, we did receive that really generous donation from Utah Gas that will be used to offset adoption fees. So if we have someone who wants to adopt and they don't have the funding, um, it might really encourage them to take that animal home, um, because right now we're pretty full down there. So um, that, that money will be used for adoption fees. Um, and then the donation jars around town that you see, I want you to know those go directly to the shelter animals. So we use that money and people are so generous around town. They really are. They just empty their pockets into these jars. It's great. And we use that, um, we collaborate with Lacy down at the shelter and determine what we need for the animals. Do we need leashes, beds, treats, food, what do we need? And then that money is used specifically for those items. Um, and just one last thing, we are still in desperate need of, of volunteers at the shelter. So if you know anybody, we'd love to have volunteers. Um, you know, we, even just once or twice a week would be great for an hour, just to walk the dogs, play with the dogs. Um, we did lose our one steady volunteer. I think he graduated from CNCC or is graduating. Um, so he's gone and he was really kind of, kind of solid there. We had him there every night, um, and we'll be losing him. So if you know of anybody who might be interested, please send them our way. We'd love to have more volunteers down there.
What are, what's the best time to meet down there?
You know, I, when I go down there and I only can make it two or three times a week too, you know, so I get the time constraint, but four o'clock seems to be a really good time. I know it's going to be getting warmer and that's going to be a really hot time of the day, but we, you know, one dog at a time, or if they'll walk together, I'll take two dogs and we just kind of do a big loop and bring them back, get them out, you know, play with them for a few minutes and kind of settles them down then for the rest of the night. Any questions or comments on this report?
Kelly, I'd like to meet with you sometime in the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
And just talk about, uh, where you're going and fill me out of any kind of strategy.
You bet.
You know, like a capital improvements goal or timeline and see if you can maybe use some of the funding that you're looking at. If it doesn't require a match, then you can use it as a match.
Okay, and now I understand. I see what you're saying. Yeah, okay.
I'd love to chat.
Okay, I will, I will just reach out to your office, um, here in the next couple of weeks and we'll set a time. Okay, you bet. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly.
Is there any other public input? Okay, changes to the agenda, anything you have on that? Anybody? Public hearing, we don't have one, correct? So, town manager's update.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, got a lot of little things that I can, uh, give you short updates on. Um, banners are up. You probably saw those go up today. Uh, flowers are out. Chloe went out, planted all those over the weekend. And so I thought that looked pretty good. She's been working on that. Um, uh, you probably saw, I think it was last week, that we burned the green waste piles, uh, down off Purdy in the house also from fire department. So that's, uh, that's gone down and it's being cleaned up, uh, down in that area. The grants that we've been working on for the east entrance, those have been submitted and we're just waiting for the rest of that to come back together. Uh, the main grant that we're looking at, um, to the state, uh, will be used primarily for the concrete blocks that we use in the entrance. And we're just seeing if that funding stays intact and if we're going to wind up getting it, if we think we will. One of the updates that I put in that email that didn't go out was that the Chauffeur Grant and the purchase of the Sagewood Lots, the Sagewood Lots that's closed. Um, they're still waiting for a couple of documents to get recorded to finalize that, but otherwise the town's done with everything that we can do on that. Another little update on Personnel Jocelyn's daughter. She's worked for us before. She's starting up again tomorrow. She'll be back in helping with the scanning on the planning documents. Um, and you all know about the DOE grant, the five million dollar grant that's been floating out there for a while. Um, and that we're having to look at possibly some other direction in order to, to make that grant work for us. We had a good meeting today with an individual who's a consulting engineer and, uh, we've had some conversations with the design build firm to see if we can get something to gel that would be a usable project that the DOE would approve. So we're working on that as well. Uh, the rest of it, I guess I'll get to here in a little bit because, uh, we're going to talk about the rally cars and I'll wait till we get to the agenda on that. There's an agenda item. You guys have anything for me? If you have questions on, on that?
You and I talked and there was, you met with somebody from the county on, did you want to talk about that a little bit?
Um, I thought I'd met with Matt. Um, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, Matt and I are building official, uh, sat down and talked for a while about, uh, another, maybe changing up the direction that we're going and refining the way that we're doing some of the stuff that their building permits. Uh, he has submitted a new contract to us. I'm reviewing that right now. It's not ready for council for this meeting. Um, but I'll have that on the next agenda and we can dig into some of the details on that. Did you have something specific?
No, no.
Yeah, so, so when I bring that, uh, that contract in to talk to y'all about that, uh, we'll, we'll talk a little bit more about everything building official and everything building wise. Um.
I thought we just signed a contract with Rio Blanco County.
Uh, no, that would be, is that a year ago? I think our contract's expiring. I don't know if it was a one-year contract or not.
It's usually a one-year contract.
Yeah.
For some reason, thought we did it last part of last year.
That's possible.
We talked about it. I don't remember signing anything. We talked about something with the building and stuff.
We talked with the maker.
Yeah, it was with the maker.
Yeah, but I thought we signed something after that.
I don't think so, but that could be.
I'll look at it. I'll see if we've got something on the record that we, that I don't know about, but I'll, I'll look into it. I'm pretty sure I did. So if there is something in this update to the, then that will, we'll probably have to explain why they're looking for an update to the contract early in the process. So. But nonetheless, I've got that pending. And I also talked, I mentioned earlier that, uh, I had met with a developer that was looking at, uh, maybe building out here. He and I talked in today. He's got sidetracked for a little bit on some other projects that he's working on, um, right now that are that are complicated or becoming complicated. He hasn't finalized, uh, anything for us yet, but, uh, still pretty hopeful that, uh, he's going to be able to start working on some stuff this year for us. So.
Some, some housing?
Yep, adding housing. I don't know the type yet. I assume it'll be like, uh, probably three bedroom, two bath, nicer entry level homes, uh.
Those things we're short on?
Yeah, that's what he does. That's what he's good at. And, uh, that's what the lots that are available would support. So we'd probably be looking at four or five of those if we can get, secure the existing lots we've got. Town has a couple of lots that we could look at selling. Also, and his name slipped my mind, I should have made a note of it, uh, the young man that came in, Andrew?
Andy.
Andy, yeah, he's, uh, he's getting ready to submit a formal offer later this week and then he and I'll continue with that discussion and see where we go and, and that will be influenced, I think, by, uh, by whether this developer wants to, wants to build houses or not.
Changes the whole life.
It does. Any other questions? I got a question for Tim, but that can wait till afterwards.
I have one more. I've had a few people call me and it's affected me personally. I know it's a really huge pain to watch, but the, the limb pile, is there any plans that we can revisit of getting that?
The limb pile down on Purdy?
Yeah.
Uh, we did burn it earlier.
I know, but people wanting to dump. If it wasn't, if it wasn't for this gentleman's kindness here, we would be in a bind.
Yeah. Yeah, I will look into that and I'd understand why we stopped doing it. I've got the history on that. Um, there's gotta be a way, I think, to.
Well, just as a, yeah, just as a councilman and again, I am ignorant, so this is just spitballing here, but I think the only way we're going to keep trash from getting there is to pay somebody to watch it. And I don't know if we can afford perhaps.
A babysitter?
Yeah, four hours, twice a month.
Seems like, wasn't it last week they had the gate open just for, I don't know, just an hour we had illegal dumping there.
I think as soon as people see the gate open, they go down.
And it was stuff that we don't, that we don't allow down there. It just showed up immediately. And it is a problem and, um, it would be, it would be great. I will put that on my list and definitely work on that. I'll bring you back some, some information for you. If you want to talk to me offline or if you want me to report on it the next meeting.
No, that's fine. I did, again, I, I'm not trying to come across as suggesting what to do, just, just some citizen concern, my own as well. I had to. I moved the whole tree to Mr. Weber's burn pile up there and I'm very grateful he has that available, but it's only a matter of time for a cow shows up in that one as well, so.
Yeah, yeah, or something that won't burn.
Yeah.
Or if it does burn, black in the sky, like the tires. So, yeah.
Well, like you said, I wonder if we could brainstorm supervised opening of the gate, just post those hours on there and come two times a month.
Possibility, you know, that the gates open during supervised hours only. So you don't babysit it all the time, but you babysit it for two hours a week or something like that.
That's exactly what, you know, was my suggestion, even, even four hours, twice a month, every other Friday for, you know.
Yeah, people get used to it, you know, and I think they'd appreciate it.
Well, I think it'll help keep our town cleaner and possibly save us money in the long run from having to clean other things up, but I don't know that for sure.
All right, I'll talk with staff and see if we can figure out.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, any council reports?
Uh, we have the Western Rio Blanco nine one one meeting. There was the cell phone, uh, fee increase per cell phone user that's going to affect. It's quite a bit extra for that and that should help benefit dispatcher training things, but other than that, there was, uh, no new town expenses or anything from that.
Okay, any others?
What's their budget at? What's the, not their, what's the budget at that they had to do the cell phone increase?
Uh, it went from, I hate to even say because I don't know what it was, but it's like right around two dollars and one cent now. I want to say it was around a dollar forty. Just off the top of my head, but those, I'm, I'm relatively positive that two dollars and one cent is really close to what it is, but I want to say it's like a thirty or forty cent increase per usage, so it's a, it's a significant gain for the budget.
Anything else? Okay, supervisors' reports, they were listed. Uh, do you might have any questions on any of that? It's always interesting to read and see what's going on. Sometimes you don't know.
They were really good reports.
They, they do, very detailed.
That's for April, right? Yeah. No, yes, that's correct. Oh, yeah, there it is. Animal Patrol Report, April twenty twenty five. So that is.
That's on the very first.
For the month, yeah.
Are you, are you seeing anything that's, um, coming up to you that, that strikes attention, that needs to be taken care of?
Uh, not on the supervisor's report at this point. There are some questions, uh, on the budget and on the, on the check register when you look at it, that I'm, uh, I'm trying to work to make sure that we all stay within budget and understand the constraints.
Okay.
That go along with that.
Anything else from anybody? Okay, I don't think we have any old business. So our new business, thirteen A, discussion and action to approve the April twenty twenty five check register.
Alan, I have a, I have a question on this too, on, uh, page eighteen.
Yes.
Of just what it is exactly. I know it's justified. I just.
I don't know what it is.
CRPDA drinking water loan? On four twenty five.
Yeah, why am I not seeing it? Oh, it's still there. Mary Bell, do you have anything that you can help me out with on that?
It's the payment we do by yearly for our water treatment plant that we had to get a loan on and it is done in April and in October. So that amount is every.
Six months?
Yeah, every six months.
Okay.
And we've been paying on it for, for Labor Day and I just still have quite a bit off.
Do we?
Yeah.
That's this, that's the newer facility?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I just couldn't remember that one in the budget.
Yeah, and that you're not going to because it's only twice a year.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on check register?
I'll make a motion to approve the April twenty twenty five check register.
Second.
Motion made by Todd, seconded by Robbie. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Thirteen B, discussion and action to approve the liquor license renewal for Perry Investments Incorporated, DBA Main Street Pub. Do we have anything? Usually we get something, don't we, on, from Ty on this, on?
There was.
Did I miss it? Okay, I'm sorry. I must have went through it quickly. Thank you. I was gonna say, I must have missed it.
I'm looking at this liquor license.
He had, he had no, uh, objection.
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve, uh, the liquor license renewal for Perry Investments Inc., DBA Main Street Pub.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Kyle. Any discussion? Besides my absent mindedness, no. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries. Fourteen informational items, rally car, rally car, July eighteenth through the twentieth of twenty twenty five. Do we have any other information on that besides just that's when it's going to be held?
A little bit. Um, they changed the route up a little bit. Uh, we met with them. They came in earlier this week and sat down with us. And, uh, they changed the route up a little bit. It looks good. They haven't finalized the route yet, so we don't have anything to, to put out to, to show them what they're doing. Um, a small portion of it, a non-reist portion of it, looks like it's going to jump into Utah just to avoid a couple of things and then back into this, into our county. But, uh, um, the race is the nineteenth and twentieth. One thing they asked me about, uh, was they said that it should be nice to get a flyby for the parade. And I, I mean, they don't know that I have any history in the military, so I called a couple of my folks up that I still have contact with back at Peterson. And they said, yeah, they give me a seminal, uh, process to submit either for that or for the, um, um, not Memorial Day.
Labor Day?
Labor Day, Labor Day Parade. Um, and, but they did say that, uh, it's a C one thirty flyby, so we might get a C one thirty, which would be really cool.
It'd be cool.
Uh, especially since I know all the guys in the airplane. But, uh, they did, I don't know if you guys saw last September, they did a flyby for, uh, uh, the football game in Denver. Um, and they got chewed on pretty hard for it because they were too long and you're not supposed to bank when you do that. And they banked pretty hard and got a, a lot of cheers.
We bank in Rangel. We don't care.
Well, the video got back to the Pentagon and the Pentagon. So they said if, if they can do it, it will be a nice peaceful. So anyway, I'm going to submit those dates to them and see if they'll do a flyby for us, ride one of those routes.
Does anybody have any other questions or any questions about?
If we can only get one date, either approved from you or do.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
That's their problem. Their idea that we're using it.
All right, thank you for that. Fifteen board vacancies, doesn't look like we have any. Sixteen scheduled announcements, I was looking through those.
Hospital update.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It's good.
We're good. And I, this doesn't, I don't guess it really goes kind of in there, but, uh, graduation is Saturday for CNCC. Um, and tomorrow's my last final to you. I'm ready.
Do you do that at the, um?
They do it in, yeah, the Colorado, well, they did, did it in the gymnasium is where they moved it to the last couple of years. I don't know if they're going to do it there or not. I don't know. It's either Colorado room or the gymnasium, so.
The hospital is hosting a community outreach meeting tomorrow at noon, so if you can make it, that'd be great. Um, Western Healthcare Alliance, uh, CEO is going to be speaking to us for a little bit and then we'll be talking about insurance. Uh, health insurance for large and small businesses.
It's in your boardrooms or your training rooms up there at the hospital, right?
Yeah, just the training.
Anything else? Yes.
Just so you guys know, where Officer Norman graduates from the Ranger Academy on Friday at ten thirty.
All right.
Uh, in the regular hall.
Yeah, it'd be in the, the, when you walk in, it's to the left, they have the two big rooms there, yeah.
Does that put her to work?
I know she'll have, uh, one month of understudy. Uh, and then she'll go to the refresher academy, I believe, like June sixteenth to twenty eighth. And then when she comes back, she'll start her FTO, I believe, might give her the twenty ninth on night shift.
Okay.
Can you get what, uh, date time again? Can you get what, uh, date time again?
Uh, it's Friday at ten thirty.
Does that fill the full-time patrol officer vacancy, is there another one?
I believe there's another one, but I don't know if it's active until August, when I transition into the school, if I do.
We're kind of waiting on the grant before we advertise anything.
I just saw an advertisement.
But yeah, she'll make us full for right now.
Okay.
Thank you for that. Anything else for that?
Uh, LARPing events coming up here in two weeks. Got graduations this weekend and the weekend after, the LARPing will be in full swing, desert of the.
Memorial Day weekend.
It's all our kingdom down at, uh, yeah, desert of, I don't know, I can't, straight, down at Camp Park, so.
Anything else? All right, if there's nothing else, then I'll call for the adjournment of tonight's meeting. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Seven thirty-one.
Oh, I did forget to say that. Thank you. You're right on.
No, they just did it the one time this year, very at the same yard where they dropped the ball and get those brooders this year.